We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, July the 18th, 2022 to order. Madam Clerk, I want to ask you if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here. I want to ask you if you will, please let us stand together. I'm going to ask our county attorney, Mr. Eric Grady, the first to lead us in our prayer, which will be followed by the pledge to the American flag.
Good and gracious Father, you are the source of every good thing and the fount of every blessing. We praise you for your great care that you have for us, your children. As a source of all that is good and true, we ask you to inspire within our hearts a greater longing to pursue these ends and draw us ever closer to yourself. We ask you to send forth your blessing upon all those gathered here before you. May we receive your guidance and wisdom in accomplishing the tasks set before us. Protect us, keep our country and counties safe from all harm, and may we pursue in freedom of heart the things that are yours now and forever. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning to everyone, and we welcome you here to the Board of Commissioners meeting. This is your meeting, and it's good to have a good attendance today. We've got a very detailed agenda today, but I think our commissioners are looking forward to the presentations and the actions that will be taken. And we welcome to those that may be viewing online also. I'm going to ask you, though, if you would this morning, and please make sure that your cell phones on vibrate, that they would not disrupt the meeting. We would appreciate it. Commissioners, you have before you your agenda. Are there any items that you desire to pull or to add to today's agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as soon as...
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Here, none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion passed. First item of business today, we are honored to have Mr. David Bone, who is the Executive Director for the East Carolina Council. He's going to make a presentation. Good morning, sir. We're glad to have you today.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to come speak with you today. I just want to take a little bit of your time to introduce myself and to reintroduce Eastern Carolina Council governments to you. Next slide. So I have 20 years of experience in local government management, both as a county manager and town manager. Most of my career has been in eastern North Carolina. I started work as Executive Director of your Eastern Carolina Council on May 16th. I'm really excited to be here. I'll be moving to Craven County this week, so excited to relocate my family here. Regional collaboration has been a passion of mine throughout my career, and so I think it's very appropriate that I'm serving as a cog director. Next slide. So as I mentioned, you know, regional projects have been a highlight of my career, water projects, economic development, regional 911 project, always 1764 Association, and we also were involved in a leadership development project with several counties as well. Additionally, I'm currently serving as the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners as their rep on the 911 board, so I serve all 100 counties in that. I've been involved in 911 for about eight years right now. Next slide. So just, I mean, you're very aware of what Eastern Carolina Council is, but for the benefit of the folks watching online and the audience here today, ECC is a multi-county local government planning and development organization. We are one of 16 councils of government in North Carolina. We are a conduit between local governments in our region and our state and federal partners. We provide technical assistance to local governments and administer projects and programs which benefit our region. Next slide. We focus on regional collaboration and partnership. We serve nine counties in our region, and we're very blessed and proud that we are here, we have our offices here in Craven County. Our mission statement is to improve the region's quality of life by providing planning, economic development, and senior services to local governments and area residents by maximizing resources and collaborating regionally. Next slide. So I just wanted to touch base, again, for the benefit of the audience, and, you know, I know you already are well aware of this information. I'm not going to go into too much detail, but you have this information, I believe, in your, hopefully in your four packets. If not, I can make additional copies of the presentation for you. But our traditional services are area agency on aging, which you're familiar with. We have two role planning organizations, Eastern Carolina RPO and Down East RPO. Next slide. We also provide economic development planning, and I think this is something that is very crucial, you know, to all of our counties, of course, all these services are, but this is something that we're looking to grow substantially. You know, one of the things that is very important is that ECC is the, EDA's designated Economic Development District, so we have the responsibility to develop and implement a comprehensive economic development strategy or SEDs for the region. I know you already have a county SEDs, and I applaud you for being proactive in your economic development planning and efforts, but this, you know, we are required by EDA to have a regional SEDs, and I'm sure your county SEDs complements what we're looking to do as well. This is one thing that we're going to be working on to revise and update. EDA requires a major update every five years, and then we update it incrementally every year, but we're, in the current year, we are in the cycle of doing the major update, so we'll be working on that in the fall and preparing that for submission to EDA in December. So that is very important because, you know, anytime, you know, you have a local government that's looking to apply for EDA funding for an economic development project, you've got to have this SEDs agreement, this SEDs plan, this vision for economic development, and it should complement and relate to the SEDs, your economic development project. Additionally, we have administrative services. One thing that we're looking to grow, and I'm currently working with Town of Newport on its town manager search, so we want to make sure that we're providing the services that our members need. Next slide. We also have community planning and technical assistance. So this is something that we have lost staff in recent years, but we're looking to grow. We're currently recruiting for a senior community planner, and so this will, this position, the person that's hired, will not only help with land use plans and zoning amendments and such, but part of the funding involves ARPA support, and so this person will also assist our local governments with ARPA questions, you know, anything that they have with the documentation for the ARPA funds. Next slide. So just wanted to relate some of my focus areas in my first 90 days. First of all, to establish board organizational priorities, expectations, and goals. Secondly, to build trust, relationships, and lines of communication, and that's one of the reasons I'm here today. Next, to build staff and organizational capacity and expand services to address member needs. So we are currently recruiting for not only the senior planner, but also the finance director, and I hope to make an announcement on the finance director soon. Next, work towards improvement, improving our financial sustainability and accountability. We're already working on that. As far as sustainability, we've got some grant funding now that will help us build capacity and grow the organization, provide some of our short-term needs, and then we want to be extremely proactive in seeking additional funds to help grow our organization. As far as accountability, we've got, I wanted to make sure that we are accountable, we're providing additional information to our board members, and also we've got additional information on our website now as far as audits and budgets and so forth. Next slide. Next is to focus on customer service and providing value to members and market our services to our members. We want to make sure that we are providing value to you and to all the towns in your county. Next, seek out opportunities to help facilitate regional collaboration. I'll talk about that a little bit more. And then lastly, tell the ECC members success stories and improve organizational transparency. I think there's, this is really important, you know, there's so many good things that are happening in our communities, and we want to make sure that we are showcasing that. And so, you know, with our communication that we send out to our members as well as on our website and Facebook page, we want to tell those stories. Commissioner Jones, as you're aware, you know, I attended the recent meeting in Cove City and, you know, was really impressed with the work that's being done on that park, the improvements, the new walking track and basketball court, and that's something that, you know, I took pictures of that, we put it on our Facebook page, we're promoting the success that's happening there, and, you know, we want to be able to tell these stories, and so as you have stories that you want us to share, we would be glad to do so as well. Next slide. So just want to give you an update on where we stand with this 90-day plan. So the 90-day plan has been endorsed by the Executive Committee as far as our short-term priorities. I have a 90-day plan with a little bit more detail than what I've provided today, but it also, but it just expounds on these goals. Secondly, build trust, relationships, and line of communication. We are providing weekly communication with the Executive Committee and General Membership Board. We restarted our monthly newsletter. We've met with county managers to begin an assessment of services that are desired. We've sent information to members about grant funding. We sent information to members about ARPA resources and deadlines, and we're also reaching out to managers and officials to get input and to make sure that we are addressing the needs that you have. Next slide. Next, as far as our goal to build staff and organizational capacity, to expand services, we, as I said, we do have the additional funding for the ARPA technical assistance. That's what is helping to fund our senior community planner position, and we're recruiting for that now, and as I said, we're recruiting for a finance director as well. The next short-term goal, develop a plan and take action to improve financial sustainability and accountability. Budget was approved, we're working on completion of the audit, and, you know, we've got the new grant, which is going to be a nice addition to our funding, and then we added the budget and audit information to the website. Next slide. You know, focus on customer service and providing value. So before I was in local government, I was in restaurant management, managed a restaurant in Chapel Hill for nine years, and so customer service is, you know, is very important to me coming from that background, and so what I try to, what I've tried to do in my career in local government is bring that customer service focus to local government, and that's what I'm bringing to Eastern Carolina Council as well. We want to continue this outreach and communication and dialogue with our members. Next, seeking out opportunities to facilitate regional collaboration and provide regional leadership. We assisted with the UNC School of Government Affordable Housing webinar, and we're working with the school government to have a follow-up, and Jack and Jean are helping with that to try to schedule a regional workshop through the school government at your Craven County visitor center, convention center. So we're hoping to have that in September. We are assisting with the Rise Eastern North Carolina effort to support resiliency. We're working with NC Impact on a town hall event on August 11th. We're also working with the Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board on a possible grant, applications to help build leadership on a regional basis in regards to workforce development. Next slide. So again, then just telling the success story, you know, we want to share those good stories. You know, we through all these different channels with the weekly communication, the newsletter, the website, Facebook, and also provide these updates on my LinkedIn personal page as well. So, next slide. So moving forward, ECC, we want to focus on customer service, create value for our members, be the trusted partner, source of information, and resource for our members, expand our planning staff, expand planning services, expand grant writing opportunities. Next slide. So again, we also want to provide leadership in bringing governments together and find opportunities to collaborate on a regional basis, including, you know, ARPA, economic development, transportation, training, addressing opioid crisis, growth in affordable housing, regional water and sewer efforts, stormwater, and legislative advocacy. If you have other ideas that you feel like we could help bring people together on, we certainly want to have that conversation and assist you in those goals. Next slide. So again, just want to thank you for your partnership and collaboration. Look, I'm happy to be here and happy to be, you know, living in Craven County as well as having our offices here in Craven County, so I'll just open the floor if you have any questions.
All right, Commissioners, any questions?
How is this being accepted by the other counties?
Very well. We've gotten very positive feedback about the efforts, the outreach that we've had, very supportive with the counties with, as far as the communication, the transparency, the outreach. So, you know, in the meeting with the county governments, Oslo County came and was very active, their county manager, and she has offered to host the next county managers' meeting, so we're glad that Oslo is being supportive as well.
One of the things I see on here, especially on the last page, is the regional water, sewer, and stormwater control. That is important to North Carolina.
Yes, sir, and I've been very involved with regional water and sewer. I was chairman of the Martin County Regional Water Sewer Authority. I was also town manager in Wendell when they consolidated with the city of Raleigh Public Utilities, and so I bring that background and look forward to sharing that knowledge and experience with others as they need it.
Commissioner Liner?
I want to piggyback on Commissioner Mark's comments there. I don't know where you're going with it. I mean, I've been the biggest voice against this organization for the start, but let me tell you, in 90 days since he's been here and started, we've seen a 180-degree turn as far as what we're getting, the support we're getting from him, and I think the organizations that I sit on and everything are getting. It's a new day. It's a new day with him at the helm, and I think he's trying. I'm not saying it's perfect right now, but it's definitely 180 better than what it was when I asked to get off this, get out of there and everything else. So I commend him for what he's done in a short period of time and the support that he's showed us, and not us, but probably everybody else as well, because he's been open to us.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one, Mr. Chair. Organizationally, what are your top three priorities between now and the end of the year?
So, top three priorities, you know, trying to build capacity, continue to grow our organization, you know, we've got, we're getting through the most recent audit, hiring the finance director, hiring the community planner. Once I can get my team in place, we've got, I think, a good plan moving forward.
Thank you. Vice Chair Booke? For the benefit of the audience here and those at home, what, who do you report to?
So I have an executive committee and a general membership board. So the executive committee is 15 members from within the organization, and then...
Not from counties, but from the organization itself?
No, no, it's from municipal and county representatives. Yes, sir. And we'd be glad to, you know, have you, have a representative from this organization on our general membership board.
All right, anything else? If not, Mr. Bone, thank you for coming.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate it and look forward to working with you.
Pleased.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda today is the Child Support Awareness Month proclamation. We will also receive an update on the activities, and I would ask those individuals to come forth at this time. Welcome.
Thank you. We got two of us here. My name is Tammy Pearson, and I work with Young Williams Child Support Services. A little bit about my background, I've been in North Carolina child support for 24 years now. I have done every job from filing to begin with and learning about all the different programs in child support. I remember specifically being asked what I knew about child support when I interviewed for it, and I knew my mom never received it. I was raised by a single parent, three of us, and she did a great job with not receiving child support. As far as Young Williams goes, we are spread across eight different states. We do call centers, customer service centers, and full-service child support. Here in North Carolina, my job is to oversee the 15 counties that we have that we provide full-service child support for. I'm going to let Ms. Ivy introduce herself. She's our office manager.
I'm Ivy Wildomore. I'm Ivy Wildomore. God, my throat is choked up. I am the office manager for Craven County Child Support. I've been with child support for nine years, but I've only been with Young Williams for one year. I love my job. I understand how child support works because I've been in the circumstance, and as Ms. Tammy said, my mom was the same way, so I understand how it works. So I know my family needs, and I know my mom needed for us, so... And I just like helping people. I mean, I used to work in the restaurants the same way that Mr. David was just saying, so I understand how customer service works. So it's kind of like, I get it. So I really know what else to say because I didn't expect to have to say anything today. So, but yes, but it's me, so yes.
So first of all, I want to say I really appreciate you recognizing August coming up as Child Support Awareness Month. As many of you know, or you may not, in 95, President Clinton established August as Child Support Awareness Month, and as a 4D worker, a child support worker, we still recognize August as Child Support Awareness Month. Our goal has changed a lot. I don't know if y'all know that it used to be called Child Support Enforcement. We've dropped the enforcement part of it. Our goal is to help parties, both parties that, with a child support program. Our goal is to get the person who is paying the support working, finding local areas that will hire the people that are to be paying the child support. So that's our number-one goal, is to establish them getting a job, working with local areas, and even outside of areas. So we try to make connections in all 100 counties here in North Carolina to get that person paying the child support that's needed. And the person receiving that child support definitely may need some help as well. We are open to working with them as well, which we do, providing them, if they need a job, if they come in and say, "Well, I can't find a job, I can't find daycare." We work with our local counties, our Department of Health and Human Services, and all kinds of agencies to get the support established for these people and get them paying, getting them on the right track. One of the things we have in one of our counties that we're working toward here in Craven is getting a liaison for our office that will work with our community partners to help them. Right now in our office, we have 10 staff, actually, we're eight. We're currently interviewing for two of the positions, and we're hopeful that one of those positions will work as our liaison as well with the community to get, find out local resources that would help our, both of our parties in need. Our number-one goal is to take care of the children that we serve here and to get them receiving the support, not just financially, but emotionally, that they may need in our office. As far as Child Support Awareness Month goes, I've been on the Board of Directors for the North Carolina Child Support Council since 2006. I was the president of it in 2014, and our goal is to work with all 100 counties to ensure that children get, are provided the stability, the financial need that they receive. Here in Craven County, we've been here for a year now, as of July 1. We're very excited to be partnered with Craven County. I don't know if you've ever called our office. When we answer the phone, it's either Child Support Services of North Carolina or Craven County Child Support. Just because Young Williams signs my paycheck, I'm a part of Craven County because that's our number-one goal, is to be a part of Craven County. I had a little bit of things to talk about, but I'm not going to keep you long. I'll let you ask me any questions you want, but I did want to talk about our total collections for the year. Our state fiscal year ended as of June 30th. We ended the year collecting almost $8.5 million for Craven County, which I think is tremendous amount of support that was received for this area. We've also got over, almost 82% of our cases that are established with a child support order. That means we're working toward getting our goal. We always set our goal higher than what a state or the federal threshold is of 75% to 85%. We tried to get up to 90-plus percent of our goal established, so you'll probably see us in court a lot, establishing a lot of new orders because we've got the court calendar pretty full with actions that we filed. We actually have established 95.13% paternities this past year, meaning someone came into our office that needed paternity established on their case, so we've done that as well. And as far as current support collections, if someone has a $500 a month order and we collect that $500, we collected 100%. If we collected $250, we collected 50%. Well, we've collected 69% of all of our cases, full amount of child support for the, in the state fiscal year, which is a tremendous amount. The state goal is around 69, too, so we're right there at that state goal. And for current arrears, that's anybody that's behind on their child support or has arrears that has been established, we have collected almost 73% of those total cases out of 100% of our cases. So, I mean, the office has done a tremendous job. You know, as in anywhere, when you take over a new place, people will decide they want to go somewhere else, or they want to go back to a county. So we've had turnover in our office, but we are currently, you know, getting to the point where we are fully staffed. We had one person who just recently left due to some family concerns. That's why we're down to the two vacant positions. But our goal is within the next month, hopefully by, for the end of this month, what I'd like to see is to have those two positions filled. But again, thank you for recognizing Craven County Child Support Office and Child Support Awareness Month. I submitted a proclamation. Feel free to edit it in any way you see fit, the numbers are accurate in that proclamation. But again, thank you for your time.
All right, Commissioners, before we adopt the proclamation, I'd like to ask whether any questions for Ms. Pearson.
The only thing I would like to say is that I really think at any time in our country that we need child support, it's now with what has been going on. And our Director of Social Services has made it aware of the problems that we face in, number one, training, number two, in getting children in the right homes, and I congratulate you for that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
I, Mr. Mark said something I had to say. However, I do have a question is that when you collect the support, is there any follow-through to see that the monies are used for child support?
Well, at this time, we follow the state and the federal policy, and there's not any in place, but I will tell you, it's been placed on legislative agenda here in North Carolina, as well as from the federal part, to work on ensuring the money that's collected goes for the needs of that child, not for something else. But at this time, there's nothing in place as far as the Title 4D program goes, but I'm hopeful that they will implement that.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Our county manager, you got anything to add?
No, sir. I just think it's symbolic. This is the year anniversary of our relationship with Young Williams, and it's been great. I've had a lot of conversations with Mr. Merritt about it through the year, and we feel like they're doing a great job and hope they continue to do so. So we're happy to have him on.
I just think I will echo that. Jack and I were talking this past week in preparation for today's meeting, and we as a Board of Commissioners in years past have received calls of concern, and over the past year, I haven't received those, and so I think that speaks volumes for what you're doing, and please echo that to all of your staff. Vice Chair.
Early in your presentation, you mentioned that you no longer have enforcement. Did I understand that correctly?
No, we do enforcement. We dropped that from the title. Years ago, we used to be Child Support Enforcement, and we dropped the enforcement part of it so we could be more proactive with all the parties involved. Because if we can get a job for someone paying the support, we want to make sure that we can do that. Our goal is to collect the money for the children, so we dropped that part.
And you work, I assume, in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department?
We do.
Who does, goes out and knocks on the doors?
Absolutely. I've done ride-alongs, not in this county, but I can tell you the ride-alongs are very exciting. But we do.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, you have there in your agenda packets proclamation that's for the Ch... for Child Support Awareness Month for August 2022. I have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. Is any discussion on the motion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all being here today. Next on our agenda, we have Allies for Cherry Points tomorrow presentation. Commissioner Mitchell is our representative on that board. She has worked very hard there. We're honored today to have everybody here that, in representation, but we have our mayor, Will Lewis, from Havelock. I know Mr. Mark Vinlayson is going to give the presentation, but gentlemen, feel free. There's others, please, that are in the room that may be with you. Please introduce them. So, Mark, Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. You should have handouts at your place that replicate the presentation that I'm going to share with you. I am Mark Vinlayson. I am the managing consultant of Allies for Cherry Points Tomorrow, or ACT. And as Chairman Jones indicated, Mayor Will Lewis from Havelock is here. He is also the president of the ACT Board of Directors, and Mr. Jamie Normant is here as well, and he leads the Government Affairs effort in conjunction with ACT. So I'm going to start off with a couple of facts that remind us why ACT exists, and why our purpose every day is to sustain and grow the missions and assets of Marine Corps Air Station Cherry Point and its civilian enterprises, in particular, the Fleet Reading Center East. About $2 billion in annual economic impact for Craven County and the broader region, about $1.2 billion in annual salaries paid to about 9,000 Marines or other service members, and about 5,000 civilian employees, around $800 million in annual purchases of goods and services, and a population in our region associated with Cherry Point of almost 40,000, including not only active duty but military dependents and retirees. But this group, the Craven County Commissioners already knows that and knows why Cherry Point's vital not only to our national defense and to preserving our freedom, but also to the economic well-being of Craven County and the broader region. Next slide. ACT is in the process of becoming a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization instead of our original 501(c)(4) classification that goes back to the early 1990s. By so doing, this has required ACT to rethink about how we're organized and the kinds of activities we want to undertake, but it doesn't change our focus in support of Cherry Point. Becoming a 501(c)(3) will allow donations to our effort to be tax-deductible and to give us the opportunity to seek support from foundations, which heretofore we've not been able to do. We can still advocate for Cherry Point, and we will continue to do so, but our new 501(c)(3) status will allow us to enhance our public education efforts with our citizens and will enable us to undertake charitable endeavors in support of Cherry Point. Next slide. ACT has changed and refocused, refocused our Board of Directors in conjunction with becoming a 501(c)(3), and we actually met last Thursday and invited six new directors to join the board, representing key constituencies in our communities such as construction, banking, media, and education. The board is now up to 17 members, including the seven appointed by our key local governments, including Craven County, of which Commissioner Mitchell is your representative. Each director on the new ACT board will be expected to help develop the organization, including seeking partnerships that assist our mission, fundraising, and board recruitment. Plus, we'll be standing up two committees that will include additional leaders from our communities to devise and execute fundraising strategies and coordinate our new philanthropic purposes. And we fully expect our local government partners, such as Craven County, to continue to support ACT through financial support, appointment of directors like Ms. Mitchell, and program partnerships. The philanthropic committee, when we stand it up, will consider the kinds of charitable activities that ACT might undertake in support of Cherry Point, and those could include such things as providing scholarships to IAT students at Craven Community College, assisting transitioning Marines entering the local workforce, or supporting in some way the Marines' families. Next slide, please. But in the meantime, the advocacy work that we've built our reputation on continues. Our government affairs partners in Washington and in Raleigh coordinate with ACT daily and have enabled ACT to have incredible success in the policy arena. We're working hard to maintain the six squadrons of F-35s scheduled to be deployed to Cherry Point and to add a squadron or to add planes to squadrons as those opportunities present themselves. Our success in working with our congressional delegation to secure needed military construction appropriations will result in some $500 million in new investment at the air station and FRC East over the next several years, all in anticipation of the deployment of the F-35s. This is in addition the approximately $1.5 billion we've helped to secure since 2015 through our diligent work at the Pentagon and on Capitol Hill. Plus, we constantly monitor developments that could impede or encroach upon our aviators' ability to train. North Carolina is considering both onshore and offshore wind energy development projects, and ACT will make sure that such development is appropriate and reasonable. Next slide, please. ACT regularly collaborates with other military-focused organizations at the local, state, and federal levels. And as a matter of fact, as soon as we get through with this presentation, Mayor Lewis and Mr. Normant are going to head to Washington for a meeting organized by the Association of Defense Communities. I'll let them speak for just a second on what they expect to accomplish while they're there. Gentlemen?
So, as you know, we regularly are in Washington, D.C., advocating on behalf of Cherry Point. And just as a preface to that, we are at the point, I think, in eastern North Carolina where we've been talking about this storm coming for years and years, and we've been doing all the prep work, infrastructure in the ground, building hangars, getting the tower, funding built like it's supposed to, because you've seen Congress constantly not funding the things that need to be funded. We'll just leave it like that, right? And so we're constantly up there talking to them about what should be funded. In our case, we talk about F-35s. It's no secret, since the beginning of the program, F-35s come to Cherry Point last of all the bases. So what's the challenge there? Same thing we've always talked about, which is if you don't fund F-35s, then we're the ones who don't get them at Cherry Point, which is what we don't want to happen. So we advocate very heavily on continuing that number of F-35s. Tomorrow morning, our new Assistant Secretary of the Navy, Secretary Berger, will be at a breakfast. We will be there to talk with her, as well as the Assistant Secretary of the Army. And by the way, we talk to folks across all the branches, Navy and Marine Corps, obviously the heaviest, but I'll just remind you that the Deputy Assistant Secretary of the Navy in charge of installations is a former Army Colonel. So we work with all the branches. You never know where they'll end up and how important that is to all of DoD, because our job is to be a part of national defense as well, not just the economic engine for eastern North Carolina. But tomorrow, we'll be there. Then immediately after, we've got meetings on the Hill with Senator Burr's staff, Senator Tillis's staff, potentially Senator Tillis himself, and Mr. Jim McCleskey, who is your North Carolina Governor's Representative in Washington, D.C., in the North Carolina office up there. We'll be meeting with all of them tomorrow. Congressman Murphy and his staff the following morning. Maybe one or two other meetings. We jam it up pretty tight while we're in town, and we'll be minute-to-minute on every meeting. But that's what we'll be doing for the next two days, is carrying that message. It has never been more important to ensure that the, the buy of F-35s stays where it needs to be and that we continue in our military construction so that we can house those F-35s.
Thank you.
So that's an example of the kind of work we undertake all the time in support of Cherry Point. ACT is also proud that two of our directors, Mayor Lewis and Commissioner Mitchell, represent our organization and serve on the North Carolina Military Affairs Commission, very important state-level organization. And Ms. Mitchell just recently unveiled a strong marketing program that NC MAC is undertaking, which is long overdue. So thank you for that. We've also partnered with defense business organizations like Defense Alliance of North Carolina. We co-hosted a virtual meeting with Senator Tillis where he spoke on the importance of leveraging military business opportunities for Cherry Point and the other installations in the state. Last slide, please. So with that, that very quick overview, I'll throw it open to you for questions, and any of the three officers will be happy to address you.
All right, Commissioners, are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know about a question, but it seems to me, from what you have said, the organization is now a stronger organization, and that you are, as far as Craven County is concerned, Cherry Point is very important to us, and that you're going to a different strategy, which you hope is going to do what we want to see accomplished.
Well, we think for sure when we get the 501(c)(3) designation, when the IRS makes that official, we'll be in a stronger position to raise private funds. But this organization is indicative of the collaboration that's ongoing in the entire region. Craven County, of course, is the leader because the station is housed here, and the FRC is housed here, and Havelock is the host community. But Cherry Point is so much bigger than that. Not only is it the largest employer in Craven County, it's the largest employer in Carteret County. And all of the counties and communities around here benefit from having Cherry Point in a strong, sustainable position.
Vice Chair Booker.
I don't think anybody would argue with any of that, Mark. I, as a former member of ACT Board, I've been concerned about where that board has been going in the last few years, I'll say. One of the functions of that board, when I was on the board, was lobbying. Can you tell me, maybe I missed it, but is that going to be part of the new mission, if you will?
Well, advocacy takes on a lot of forms. Lobbying could be a part of that. ACT itself and the board members won't be lobbyists.
I understand that. But employ lobbyists is what we've done in the past, correct?
We coordinate with the Government Affairs Team.
All right.
But we're all on the same page. We all talk about the same goals and missions, and I think we work incredibly well together. I think the advocacy that we will take on, I think, more strongly will be the community outreach and public education, because we can't stress strongly enough that we need the support of the local people to understand what goes on over there and how important that it really is.
I totally agree with that. Unfortunately, I'm sure the other people who represent other bases, other forts, other camps, they're up in DC, too, and we need to make sure we keep that presence.
Absolutely, and I think we do a very, very good job of that.
Any other questions, comments? I would just state, Commissioner Mitchell has been very active and devotes a lot of time on behalf of this Board of Commissioners and citizens of Craven County in advocating for Cherry Point. Due to Senate Bill 473 that has not been corrected by our North Carolina General Assembly, it restricts her today from the ability to comment and, because she is a part of that board. But she could definitely, not that you hadn't done a good job in, in the mayor, but she could definitely bring additional insight for us. But I just want to say thank you for your efforts and for what you're doing, and we appreciate it. Gentlemen, safe travels to you. Thank you. Appreciate you coming today and making this presentation to us.
Thanks for having us. Appreciate it.
All right. Commissioner, I would like to just take a moment, if you will allow, today. We are honored to have with us leadership Craven and Ms. Brandy Pop, who is manager for the Public Relations and Outreach for Carolina East. She's here today. Ms. Brandy, welcome. You want to introduce anybody that may be with you?
Yes, Todd Conway. Phil Bieber-Beeby is here with me today. So thank you all for having us and allowing us to sit in. It's been insightful.
Thank y'all for being here today. We appreciate it. And also, I would just say thank you for your service, but also, Ms. Brandy, I served with her on another board, and she does a lot for Craven County that we don't see, but also her efforts and what she does for Carolina East. Thank you. We appreciate that. All right, Commissioners, you have item four of your agenda today, the consent agenda. You have the minutes of the July 5, 2022 regular session, tax releases and refunds. You also have the request for the addition to state-maintained secondary road system in the cherry branch vicinity. Are there any items that you desire to pull from the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda for A, B, and C. Is any discussion on the motion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leiner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right. The next item we have this morning is special appropriation membership fees. Mr. County Manager?
Yes, sir. So you gave the intro there. Because of Senate Bill 473, no commissioner who serves on any nonprofit or community-related board may vote on the budget appropriation from this board. So we're going to have to take these separately. Normally, all of these next five items would have been in your annual budget, but we pulled them out. We're going to deal with them separately. So, Mr. Chairman, when we get, we're going to have the commissioner recuse himself for the record before we discuss it, and then we'll discuss it, vote, and then go to the next one and do that process five times. So the first one we're going to talk about this morning is the ACT Board, who we just got a presentation for. So I'm going to ask Commissioner Mitchell to start with that.
Commissioner Mitchell, if you don't mind, just stating for the record that you will recuse yourself from any discussion or vote on this.
Yes, as, as the vice chair of ACT and a member from the county representative status, I am formally recusing myself from any discussion or vote. All right? Thank you.
The board needs to vote.
Yeah. And it actually needs to be an affirmative vote of the board, so if you could do that.
All right. So I need a motion and a second to allow her to recuse.
I'm moved.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second to allow Commissioner Mitchell to recuse herself. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. All right, motion passed. All right, now, County Manager.
Okay, Ms. Chairman, Commissioners, annually, the membership allotment for ACT has been $25,000. It's been that as long as I've been here as county manager. They requested that amount again. If you look at Attachment 5A in your agenda packet, it gives you the budget amendment. They basically would take this funding from fund balance, place it into the membership fees under the Commissioner's budget for the amount of $25,000.
I make a motion to approve.
Suck it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve $25,000 for ACT. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Oh, excuse me.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leiner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, item B.
Okay, Ms. Chairman, this one also affect Commissioner Mitchell. This is the Southeast Partnership. It's an economic development collaborative in southeastern North Carolina. So I'm going to turn the floor to Commissioner Mitchell again for this one.
I'd also like to recuse myself from this discussion and vote.
All right, do we have a motion and a second?
I'm moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to allow Commissioner Mitchell to recuse herself from voting on the North Carolina Southeast Partnership, but any discussion on the motion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passed. All right, Ms. County Manager?
Ms. Chairman, this is a annual $20,000 allotment. Our portion, Craven County's portion, is $10,000. The C-1A picks up the other 10. It's, the 10's included in Mr. Wood's budget, which is our economic development budget. And Jeff, if, unless he has some things to add, I think he would recommend remaining in this organization.
Absolutely. Make a motion to approve.
Suck it.
We have a motion and a second to allocate $10,000 to North Carolina Southeast Partnership. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Mark? Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Item C.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we would need to ask Commissioner Booker to recuse himself from any discussions on the ACT, um, excuse me, the C-1A budget.
Yeah, as a member of the C-1A Board, I'd like to recuse myself from any discussion.
All right, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Suck it.
I have a motion and a second to allow Commissioner Booker to recuse himself from discussion on C-1A. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Mr. County Manager?
Mr. Chairman, this one is our annual dues to the C-1A, which is a public-private partnership involving Craven County, the city of New Bern, the city of Havelock on the public side, and then the private sector businesses here in Craven County. It's had a lot of success. Mr. Wood oversees that organization along with his role as our county economic developer here with Economic Development Department. Our dues are on a per capita basis. This year, based on the census, it is a little bit different. At $50,360 would be our annual contribution. Jeff, you want to add anything to that?
I recommend it as well.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve $50,360 to the C-1A. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, item D.
All right, we would ask Commissioner Booker to recuse himself again from discussions on Realized U-252.
As a member of the Board of RU-252, I'd like to recuse myself from any discussion.
All right, you've heard the request. What's on the board?
I'm moved.
We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Mark. Any discussion on the motion? To allow Commissioner Booker to recuse himself. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Mr. County Manager?
Mr. Chairman, this is a request from Realized U-252. They're a local, long-term substance abuse facilitation group. They have a property on, off Old Cherry Point Road. They had asked and been appropriated money in 2019, 2020 budget. They took a reorganization year. Commissioner Booker could tell you a whole lot about it if he could talk, but they're now open. They've reformulated what they're doing. They have the house full of participants who are seeking long-term substance abuse in a healthy environment. They are asking for $10,000 and this would be a buy-down of the admission fee, just like it was the first time. So if it's $600 a month and someone comes in with no money, we would provide a scholarship through this funding to allow those people to enter the facility.
Motion to approve. Suck it.
We have a motion and a second to approve allocation of $10,000 to Realized U-252. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, item E.
All right, if we would have Commissioner Mark recuse himself for discussion on Highway 70, Commissioner.
As being on the Board of Highway 70, I recluse myself from this.
All right, you've heard the request. What's on the board? I have a motion.
I'm moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second to allow Commissioner Mark to recuse himself from discussion on Highway 70. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Mr. County Manager?
Mr. Chairman, this is our annual contribution to Highway 70 Corridor Commission. It is a five-county regional group who works to improve Highway 70. There's been a lot of work done over the last 15 years to get where we are. As Commissioner Mark would probably tell you, the Havelock bypass, about 50% done. James City's just getting underway and they are making a big push to get the Kinston bypass in now. Our annual contribution, which is the same of all counties, is $25,000.
Make a motion to approve.
Suck it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the allocation of $25,000 to Highway 70. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here no discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, thank you. All right, item six of our agenda discussions today is the Vanceboro Christian Help Center discussion. Mr. County Manager?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I believe it was at your first June meeting, Ms. Kristi Arrington came before you. She's the executive director for Vanceboro Christian Help Center. She is asking for $6,000 to help them with a variety of issues going on at their center. They do have about $12,000 a year in operating expenses and she's asking us to pay approximately half of that. They are providing a huge impact in the food issues, food insecurity. They're providing a food bank along with personalized services based on the client's needs. They are a piece of the puzzle, I would say, when you look at our county and the geography of it. We've got RCS here, who's doing a great job in New Bern, pushing toward Havelock, but western Craven County really has a void. I think they're trying to fit that. The only thing I would say from a personal experience is during Hurricane Matthew and Hurricane Floyd, this group stepped up in the Vanceboro community, provided services to the citizens, along with Mr. Jean, who's not here, and his efforts there. So that's the request.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, we have, well, but that's for the $6,000. That's the request, okay? All right, we have a motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second to consider $6,000. Discussion, Commissioner Smith?
Yes. Is this, is this in operation now or?
Yes, ma'am. They have a board of directors and they have a facility and somebody helped me with the street name in Vanceboro, but White Street, there in Vanceboro, they have a little facility.
It's right at the stoplight, the only stoplight in Vanceboro.
Yep.
It's right there.
Okay.
Turn down that road by the old fire department. All right, any other discussion? All right, the motion is for $6,000 appropriation for the Vanceboro Christian Help. No discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. All right, item seven is the Dicks Crisis Center, the memorandum of agreement renewal. We'll have Commissioner Liner and the County Manager to present this today, so whichever one wants to go.
You want me to kick it off? Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Liner and I serve on the Dicks Center Board, which is a regional detox facility for Carteret, Craven, and Onslow Counties. We have been in this, I believe, for about three years now, four years now, and this memorandum of agreement would extend that for one year. There are some challenges with the facility, as this board is aware, particularly the distance from a Craven County resident to get to Jacksonville to the facility. However, Commissioner Liner, I spoke this morning, last month, we had the highest number of Craven County citizens in the facility at 16 and we had the highest year we've been at 168 citizens served through the facility. So we're making progress getting there. We talked with the sheriff and his team, the hospital and others, on the best way to get people there. Transportation's still a bit of a boundary, I mean a barrier, excuse me, so we're continuing to work on that. Commissioner Liner and I will more than likely have the leadership from the facility up here in the next month or so to have a regional meeting and talk about how we can do it better. But we know during this one-year period of time, we've got to see continued progress and then this board would have to look next budget at whether you want to continue on or look at a more localized option. So Commissioner Liner, I'll turn the floor to you.
Yeah, I'd go with what you had to say, Jack. I think, like I stated earlier in our meetings, the one year, I think we have to go with our one year to see what they're going to do. Our numbers have increased. I want to make sure they're just not filling those and make sure we stay longer. I want to see if that continues out for the next year. Our biggest problem is transportation. They told us when we joined that they would provide transportation up here, come up here and pick them up and take them. And that's been an issue and they've admitted that being an issue. Another one is that 24-hour chair, it's on hold right now, but I think you all need to look at it when it comes back up. But I think the one year, we need it. If we get out of it, then what are we going to do? So we need to be prepared of which avenue we're going to approach on this thing, but I'd like to see the numbers continue. Like I said, this has been the best year we've had at 168. It's been the best month we've had in three years, so if that trending still goes like that, hopefully it doesn't. You know, I know we want it to go down, but I want to make sure it's going down for the right reason and not because they're giving it to somebody else on that. So I would, I would make a motion and we approve it for the one year.
Commissioner Liner, this also helps the hospital.
It does help the hospital, yes.
I'm moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second from Commissioner McCabe. Any discussion on the motion? And this is to have a one-year agreement extension with the Dicks Crisis Center. Commissioner Booker?
Do we know what percentage of the occupancy is? You gave us a number. Do we have 10% of the occupancy or 20 or 15 or 30 or what? Where are we, Jack? Do you know?
It varies every month. We were about 14% this past month. We've ranged in the 10 to 15% range. Onslow, of course, is normally about half. They're there. It's their county. What Commissioner Liner and I have noted is there's a huge amount of folks from New Hanover County that have been coming there. There was a facility in New Hanover County that was open that took Onslow, Carteret, Craven people for many years. They closed, so that need was met by the Dick Center. It was unanticipated when we got into this program, but now New Hanover's getting ready to open a new facility here in the next six months or so, so we think that'll give some relief there. But we're seeing folks from all across North Carolina and some of it's because they just happen to be in one of the three counties and get into a crisis or there's nowhere else to go. North Carolina's really working to build that, but it's not there for detox.
Well, we did, at one point, we did have people coming in quantity, if I recall, from Wilmington.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Is that still going on? Because Wilmington didn't, didn't contribute, right?
Right, exactly. The numbers are still high.
Yeah.
It's higher than what we want, but we've had, we've asked staff to go down to Hanover and meet with them, with some board members, and see where they're going to come up online. Our problem been, has been with Hanover, depending on how soon they can get theirs operational. Prior to us getting Dicks going, Hanover took our people for no cost. So when Hanover lost theirs, we thought it was a fair share for them to come up for what they've done for us over the years. And I think they've really pushed the limit for the numbers and everything else. So we're approaching them now for funding to see, they want to come aboard on that way or to see when they're going to open their facilities. Because they're going to open a 200-bed facility down there on that one, so.
That's good.
It's been in the past that we were reluctant to charge them because they gave it all to us for free.
But my last comment or question is, transportation was mentioned. I'm not aware of them having the center coming here to pick up any people. Am I right or does that happen?
They're supposed to.
I know they are, but they have not, correct?
They have not, no.
So it, the burden falls on, on the Sheriff's Department primarily. If they go and, and find somebody that needs immediate care, then we've got to take them down to Jacksonville.
Correct.
Okay.
Sheriff, you want to make any comment?
Just what Commissioner Booker and Liner said, you know, the transportation has been an issue and, you know, that does tie up a deputy that typically when these things happen, it's a road deputy, that we have to fall off the road and do a transportation down there to turn around when we get there, if there's a bed. It is fairly quick because we're not, we don't go into the facility to drop off. But it kind of seems like they've set a precedence also that, you know, whether you're, I should say, helping funding or not, they're going to take individuals from whatever county. So that's an issue when we've got somebody, we pay and we get there and then maybe someone else from another county that might not be a member that's taken. But so hopefully that will get worked out, but the big thing was the transportation.
Okay, any additional questions?
Commissioner Liner, we're paying $250,000 right now for those people going in there.
300.
300, 300,000.
It's 200 from the county and 100 from Carolina East.
Yeah. What would it be with the chairs? What was the amount they were asking for the chair?
Oh, wait, almost a million dollars. Almost a million dollars.
Okay.
Not that much.
No.
And Jack?
The chairs wasn't, wasn't worth it.
No, I mean, that was the big thing at one time.
They ever bring the chairs up, whoever sits on this board here should not go with that portion because it has no, from my perspective, from what I've seen, has no value at all.
Right.
So, Jack, just clarification to make sure, in this year's budget, we've got funding our part. The hospital's already committed their 100,000 and so we've got our 200,000 taken care of.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we've got that funds allocated for. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Let me see.
And this may partially be directed at the Sheriff's Department. Does the Dick Center not have a program where you call at 3 o'clock and say, I'm going to bring somebody, put them in the car with a deputy and there's, and they're holding the bed for them? Because my concern, I mean, number one, obviously we need, our citizens need access to a detox facility, but they also need law enforcement. And when you tie up a deputy to take the afternoon or the morning to take someone over there, number one, that is a cost to the citizens of this county for loss of law enforcement time. But two, if they get over there and there's no bed because in that hour they gave it away, there's absolutely no benefit. So is that not part of the deal with the Dicks program that they can hold it till you get there? Because it sounds like what you're saying is there's not.
It was my understanding. There have been times when we've gotten there, and in fact, there hasn't been a bed. That presents us with a huge issue, not only from the standpoint of sending a deputy to Onslow County, and they're gone, but then what do we do?
Mm-hmm. And what do you do with them?
That's when, you know, partnerships with the faith-based, the non-profits come into play, and we try to find another or alternate solution. We have just recently entered into an agreement with Recovery in Carteret County, which is going phenomenal. There's never been a, we don't have a bed, even when we're not contracted to that bed. So, you know, I hope that's something that the county looks at moving forward. It's very successful, and they're anxious to come to Craven County as well, and I think the county man can work on that as well. But the transportation, it has been a huge problem, and not only us taking there, but getting them to come to Craven County. There's been times, many times, when it's just not available. So, but at the end of the day, we're going to do what we have to do. I agree, we have to find these people out. So, if that means we send a deputy down there and they bring it back, we can't just take that person back to the street.
Right, drop them somewhere.
So, we'll make it happen when we're done.
Okay, any additional questions? All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Here are no further discussion on the motion, and that is to extend the agreement one more year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Commissioners, before we go into departmental matters, I'm going to ask that we take a five-minute recess, and that'll give staff time to prepare for that. We'll bring the meeting of the Board of Commissioners back to order. Next item is item eight, which will be under departmental matters in Solway's. Mr. Stephen Astor, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for having me this morning. I have three items for your consideration this morning. The first item here is the debris removal contract renewal. As part of a disaster preparedness, Craven County has always held a pre-positioned primary and secondary contract for debris removal. Debris removal is typically reimbursable by FEMA for federally declared events, of course. On August 19th, 2019, Craven County Board of Commissioners awarded Phillips and Jordan the primary debris removal contract, and Crowder Golf LLC the secondary contract for debris removal. Both of those contracts are set to expire September 3rd, 2022. It is the recommendation of the staff that the Craven County Board of Commissioners authorized the county manager to execute a one-year renewal for the primary debris removal contract, as well as a secondary contract to Crowder Golf. Both renewals will ensure the county has a participating debris removal contractor in the event of a natural disaster. Staff and debris management consultant will be available for any questions.
All right, is any questions?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the one-year renewal, and is any discussion on the motion? Here are none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. All right, B.
Thank you, Chairman. Second, the second contract we'd like to discuss today is the monitoring contract, which goes along with the debris removal contract, but it's a separate contract. As part of a disaster preparedness, Craven County has always held a pre-positioned primary and secondary contract for debris monitoring. Debris monitoring is typically reimbursable by FEMA for federally declared events. On the 19th, August 19th, 2019, Craven County Board of Commissioners awarded Tetra Tech the primary debris monitoring contract, and the current debris monitoring contract is set to expire on September 3rd, 2022. It is the recommendation of the staff that the Craven County Board of Commissioners authorized the county manager to execute a one-year renewal for the debris monitoring contract. This is just the primary contract. The authorization of the debris monitoring removal or renewal will ensure the county has a participating debris monitoring contractor in the event of a natural disaster. Staff and the debris, debris management consultant will be available for any questions.
Any questions?
So moved.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the extension of one year. Any further discussion on the motion? Here are none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. All right, C.
Thank you, Chairman. The last item I have for your consideration today is a Baco purchase for the Highway 101 Convenience Center. Craven County Solway's Department has requested approval of the budget amendment showing detachment 8C in the amount of $72,000 to reallocate funds that were originally allocated for fiscal year '22 for the purchase of a JCB Baco. The JCB Baco was ordered July 7th, 2021, and the Craven County, and Craven County is still awaiting delivery. The vendor company, Wrench, is set on October 22 deadline for the equipment to be delivered. The delivery and manufacturing of heavy equipment has been significantly impacted with labor shortages and COVID-19 pandemic.
All right, any questions? So moved. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $72,000. Any discussion on the motion? Only thing I do want to ask, do we have a shelter for this one down at Highway-
We do, yes, sir.
All right, any additional questions?
I would just like to say that Steve's done a heck of a job with all of the places that we have our garbage, and it's outstanding how clean they are.
Thank you very much.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you being here. All right, item nine is recreation, and we have with us Mr. Mark Seymour. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, good morning. Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time this morning. Before I discuss the potential splash pad project out at Creekside Park, I want to take a minute to congratulate a group that participates out at Creekside Park. Some of you may have seen on the news or social media, the eight-year-old All-Star team from the New Bern Girls Softball League, played in the Southeast Regional Tournament over the weekend. They won that tournament, and they are now going to the World Series in Florida in July. So, we're having a little parade starting in Bojangles in James City this evening, 6:30, making the way over to Creekside, bells and whistles, having a little party for them out there. So, if you get a chance, 6:30, 6:45 out at Creekside Park, we have a little party out there.
Fantastic, thank you.
Very exciting news. Today, I want to talk to you about a grant opportunity for a splash pad out at Creekside Park. The Accessibility for Parks Grant Program provides $10 million for parks and recreation grants to benefit children and/or veterans with disabilities in North Carolina. Local grants are eligible to apply, local governments are eligible to apply for these matching grants. Matching grants can be used to build special facilities or adapt existing facilities that meet the unique needs of children and/or veterans with physical and developmental disabilities. Local governments can request a maximum of $500,000 with each application and must match the grant with at least $1 of local funds for every $5. What we're proposing is a splash pad out at Creekside Park. The inclusive playground that we built out at Creekside Park in 2016 remains very popular. An inclusive splash pad would add another fun element of play and interaction for the community. During the spring and summer months, we have very large crowds out there that utilize Creekside through paid reservations, day camps, and daily visitors. The department proposes adding a new inclusive splash pad right next to our concession stand and the inclusive playground. Staff is also exploring the expansion of a current restroom facility at the front of Creekside Park. The existing restrooms were built in 1997, and they're in need of expansion to address the needs of the county's growing user base. Splash pad would be fenced in right around the area because it's right near the parking Cost estimates for the splash pad, $336,000, that's for the actual splash pad. We would fence it around, an additional $15,000. Accessible parking to use right near the splash pad would be another $15,000. The $200,000, we would look to add two inclusive family restrooms located right where our current restrooms are, in addition to what we have out there. Water and electric to run to those splash pads would be an extra $34,000 for a grand total of $600,000 total project. Our next steps on this project, we've discussed it with our regional representative from Recreation and Resource Services. She's expressed interest in it, says it's a very good project and would fit into what this grant, grant writing process is. Today, I'm obviously here to request permission from the Commissioners to submit the grant request. If we do receive that request, then we will discuss it with our Recreation Advisory Board at our July meeting. From there, we'll work with all county departments to determine what needs to be, what documents need to be put in place. After that, we'd hold a public input meeting similar to what we do for a part-of-grant. We'll complete the grant in October and turn it in November. Grant will be announced in September of 2023, with the hopes of starting construction shortly thereafter. Anybody have any questions on it?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we approve this. I think that anything we can do to improve our parks is going to bring more people to Craven County, and therefore, I really recommend it.
All right, so that's a motion to approve proceeding applying for the grant. We have a motion and a second discussion. Commissioner Smith.
My question is, I think it's, I think it's good. Ever, I'm wondering about the hygiene of this, considering COVID and monkeypox and all that. I don't understand quite how this splash pad works. How safe is it for, you know, different children to-
So, there's a couple of different ways you can do it. This is a flow-through system, so it's one-time use of water. It goes in and goes into the sewer. The other one is a recycled water, which uses more chlorine and, you know, a lot more time upkeep as far as, as far as keeping the water up to date.
The water does have chlorine and it's conditioned.
That's, that's the recycle program. The one we're going through is just a one-time use, so it'll not be reused water.
Commissioner Mitchell.
The current existing restrooms that you're talking about upgrading, are those adequately fitted with ADA access now?
They are. We have stalls that are ADA accessible, ADA accessible, but what we're proposing is possibly like a family restroom, chains and station, two, three kids in there at the same time. What we're running into, by and large, day-to-day, those restrooms are fine, but when we have special events, soccer days out there, family reunions, big birthday parties, it's just not enough. There's three stalls in each one, and we just, we could use a little bit more out there.
Hi, Jane.
Yes.
Vice Chair.
I've never heard of a splash pad before I read this. So, again, can you kind of describe what it looks like, how big it is? What is it?
So, this is the rendering of what we would be looking at. So, you're looking at a, I don't have the specs on me, but 70 feet by 70 feet square, and whether or not there's different little play areas. So, there might be a bucket that drops water down, there's little tubes that shoot out water, ground entry ones where they're motion activated when you walk through splash pad. What it essentially is, it gives it a water feature without having a pool. There's, I think there's 25 to 30 different play areas on this one. I can't remember off the top of my head, but essentially, a play feature without having a pool.
Commissioner Smith.
This is what I saw, and then when you said it was a one-time use of water, I, it kind of relieved me. However, now that I'm looking at it again, it's a one-time use, but it seems to me there are several people on that pad at one time.
What I meant by one-time use is the water only goes through one time. So, the, the water flows through, and it's constantly bringing in new water. There, yes, there's certainly several play areas, and we would have it similarly sanitized to how we have our playgrounds. We'd have sanitizing stations there, and certainly would be cognizant of any health needs that would arise. But it's a one-time, it's not using the same water over and over. That's what I'm talking about.
So, if I understand this correctly, if we get the grant, it'll cost the county $100,000?
Correct. The maximum total for the grant is $500,000, which we had it in our CIP, but, but this, this grant kind of came up. It's a $10 million one-time appropriation into four different regions. So, yes, if we got the $500,000, we would have a $100,000 match-
So, Commissioner Booker, it's in year 2028 in your CIP. It's something we'd like to do, but there's been other priorities in front of it. Because of the grant opportunity, Mark and Billy thought this was an opportune time to really get it for $100,000.
Well, I think, I think the key issue here is what they've opened it up to, if you didn't notice it in here, is veterans with disability development, which is going to be a big selling point for this area and everything.
Definitely.
So, that's, that's going to be a big issue.
And that's also where we want to tie in our inclusive restrooms as well.
All right, any other discussion? All right, we had, we've talked so long, I can't remember. Do we have the motion and a second?
I made a motion.
Okay, we had the motion and a second. We had the discussion. Any additional discussion? Here, Madam Clerk, I'm going to let you call the roll on it, please.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, item B.
This is our tennis court resurfacing project. This is the tennis court resurfacing project for West Craven Park. We initially had $50,000 in the 2022 budget to resurface the courts. We used a small portion of that to fill in several cracks while we had an asphalt contractor on site for another project, in, in hopes of getting the, the main porch resurfaced. We hope to have the rest of the project complete in the spring of '22. Contractor that priced the job is behind, and we've been in constant communication with him. Anticipated date now is for late summer to complete this project. We're requesting to move this project to the 2023 fiscal year for completion.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion on the motion? The motion is to approve the budget amendment of $96,000. Commissioner Liner.
Explain, I have notes here, but I don't see it. We had $50,000 in 2022, but we're asking for 96. Where's the other 46 coming from?
That is from a finance standpoint. I'm not sure, I, I don't know where that fit in. The 48,000 is what, what we needed from our end of things.
Give me a second. So, is that, Commissioner Liner, it's the, yeah, it's, it's the accounting mechanism that requires you to take it out of reserve, put it into fund balance, move it from fund balance into the budget. So, it's the same 48,000, you just got to move it twice. The accounting procedure. So, if you look at attachment-
So, we're not moving 50, we're moving 48.
Correct. But the budget amendment's for 96 because that's the way it has to show for our audit.
Yeah, and it's also on, on tennis courts, I think we did this about seven years ago, wasn't it, Jack? Where we resurfaced it? It's about every seven years you have to resurface.
Yeah, seven years, depending on play and weather, but seven years is a good mark. Those courts are really nice out at West Craven.
Yeah, and they're used by the high school also.
They get team sports from high school and middle school, and then a lot of play just in general.
We've got some lessons out there as well, and we're, and they, they are, and we've been trying since July of last year to get them, and they're, they're in need.
And I was out at the ribbon cutting at West Craven, and I'll tell you, they have done some job on that park, really has, and the improvements are just tremendous.
I think, and our staff has worked hard to get that going as well. We, we added some new swing sets out there in the last couple of months, and we've got our walking trail and workout equipment. If you haven't been out there, it's neat to see. I mean, there are people out there every day.
How many thousands of feet do you have, or yards for work, for walking?
It's a quarter-mile track.
Quarter-mile track?
Quarter-mile track, yes, sir.
All right, any further discussion? Here are none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it so much. All right, item 10, we have Mr. Andrew Shorter, our Port Director. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman. Commissioners, appreciate your time this morning. Before I get started with the grant paperwork and approvals, hopeful approvals, I just want to mention the Williams Road Project. If you didn't catch it in the state budget, there's $8 million in there for that, and we appreciate the support of this body on that project. Without some of the heavy lifting that many of the members here did to help that out, it wouldn't have come to fruition. So, we have started in earnest on the environmental assessment on that. We had our first meeting a couple of weeks ago. The DOT has contracted a engineering firm to start that, an engineering firm that also has airport arm to it as well, so that was a, a good move, I, we think, on their part. So, anyway, thank you again for the support on the Williams Road Project. That'll be very important. The FAA is very happy that the state weighed in on that to fund that road realignment, so then, in a couple of years, we can get to the runway extension. All right, for the business at hand, we have two grants. The first grant is merely a final obligation of the CARES Act grant that we had initially received, allocation we had originally received from the federal government. We only put a portion of that, that was an $18.7 million allocation, and they only allowed us to put 14.7 million of it on obligation for operations and maintenance costs. So, we've had a couple of development projects that they allowed us to do additional grants for, and this is the final one of that. So, it's 2.562397, so $2,562,397, and that goes towards a road and parking lot upgrade project. If you've driven past the airport in the last couple of weeks, you've seen the parking lots being worked on right now. It's going to add 150 spaces to the parking lot, so that'll be good, and we, that room became available after we did the roundabout project. So, a little reconfiguration of the road there meant that we could put these new parking spaces in, and they're closer in than what we had originally planned in our planning was to go further out. So, it's 150 new closer-in spaces that will get redone, in addition to rehabilitating the entire parking lot. There's also several other roads around the airport, and there's a diagram in your packet that kind of shows those areas. If you orient yourself in landscape here, obviously, the upper right-hand corner is the terminal parking lot. The blue area is the new area. The yellow areas are the repaved areas, and you can see we repaved part of the loop, one of the back entrance roads for the terminal. And then if you move down to the center bottom of the diagram, that's near the FedEx Building. That's where the terminal used to be, so there's a fair bit of infrastructure down there, and roads that are pretty shabby at this point. So, we'll be able to repave those, and then if you move over to the left upper part of the diagram, you see some yellow and orange. The orange will be rehabilitated, surface coating type repainting, and then the yellow is mill and repaved. So, that's the roads that support the, what we consider the general aviation side of the airport. So, all this together, what it does is, was part of our strategic plan with the CARES money to do these projects, is it buys down future costs of the airport. So, the money we have now, we're doing projects that would cost the airport something in the near future, probably in the next five to seven years, these roads would have had to been redone anyway. So, we can use that authority from the CARES Act to do that now, to maintain a lower rate structure for airlines, as we're still trying to entice more air service to the area. structure for airlines as we're still trying to entice more air service to the area. So, the request is to accept the grant for $2,562,397 for this road and parking lot improvement project.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve the addendum grant. Any discussion on the motion?
Now, I'd just like to piggyback on what Andy got to say. I mean, this is getting this airport to a position that's going to put us out there 10 or 15 years ahead of schedule of what we're looking for, of what Andy and his staff is doing. Like I say, this would have cost the airport a lot of money five years down the road and everything else, so it's being paid by CARES Act money, and I think it gets us well ahead and gets us looking better for any development that we want to put out there as far as aviation type stuff going up there. So, Andy's done a great job on moving stuff ahead of schedule, so I appreciate that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. All right, B.
Okay, so the next one, slightly more complicated because it's a larger project, a lot of more money moving around. We have a terminal improvement project coming up. We went out for bid, we got the bids on March 28th. We put in for the BIL, the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, funding for it. It did not come through that way, so we've reverted back to what I've told the authorities, really Plan A is to do the, use the airport improvement project money allocated by the FAA, comes through the Airport and Airway Trust Fund. It's basically user fees, people that fly in and out of airports pay into this fund. So, what we have in this current grant of $13,935,000 is a combination of the federal entitlement that we get every year being a commercial airport. We saved that up a couple of years, so there's the 3 million of that, and then there's also 10 million of a discretionary allocation from the FAA. So, we've had this plan programmed through the FAA, through our master planning process, so they have dedicated an extra $10 million for this project this year. You say, okay, well, that's 13 million, you just said it's going to cost 26 million. Well, this is a very complicated project, and we have several pots of money to go into this. We also have our state funding that we get, being a commercial airport in the state, of 1.3, it's $1.3 million this year, but in that state budget that I just spoke about the road, there's also an extra $440,000 per year that the airport will get through the state commercial service airports funding. So, we have that, and then we also have the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law. The airport does get a, basically another entitlement from that, is $1.4 million per year for the next five years. So, if you flip in your sheet to the end, you'll see some, I'll just make it easier. The one sheet with the yellow line through the middle of it is easiest to talk about. So, on the top, you have FY '22 monies. So, you see the state grant funds of 1.32 million, then you see our entitlement, which is just over the 3 million this year, then you see the discretionary of 10 million, and this is in the far-left column of numbers, and then local match, again, federal funding requires us to give 10% funding, so our local match will be 1.4 million. The total for this year, $15,782,089. So, again, that's about 15 million out of the 26 million. So, then you go below the yellow line, and then you see what we plan for next year. It'll be another amount of the state funding, but you see, we don't need to use it all next year, we're only going to use a million of it. Then our entitlement funding of 1.3 million, then you see the discretionary of 4.1 million, and then the BIL funding, this will be the two-years' worth of it, at 2.894, and then our local match at 900,000, which finally at the bottom, that far-left-hand column, we total up the project total cost of $26,142,266. So, the airport authority's concern is like, okay, you're talking about this discretionary, but where's the grant for it? Well, of course, by law, the FAA can't issue that until their next fiscal year. So, the authority will be out on risk for a little over $4 million for part of next year until we get that grant in. We do have it in the fund balance right now to cover that, but worst case, even if we were not to get that discretionary next year, this is an eligible cost for the FAA. We will get that money from the FAA, the question is a matter of when. I had a very good conversation with our airports district office manager in Memphis, and he has assured me that we're the number-one priority for that discretionary grant, because once they start a project, of course, we go up in the priority list to get the discretionary funding for them next year. If not, we have these other pots of money that we could use. However, that's an opportunity cost that we don't want to spend on this terminal because we have other things on the airport that we're continuing to do. But I think we're in a very comfortable position, and the one thing I haven't talked about that I think would be a greater risk would be to have to borrow money to do this. This is going to be completely funded without borrowing any money, and I think that would be a bigger opportunity cost to have to borrow money. Either that or push this project further down the road when we don't, when we know or we don't know that we have the $10 million discretionary that we know we have sitting right here in this grant right now. So, that was the heaviest lift of this, was to get $10 million discretionary. That's a large discretionary allocation for a, you know, non-hub-sized airport. So, we have a very good relationship with the FAA, they bought into our plan, these are modest improvements to the terminal, and if you flip back a couple of pages to the architecture diagrams, I'll just go through those with you real quick to give you a comfort level of what we're doing. The first one that has the yellow and orange in it looks like this. The yellow portion is basically complete new construction, so it's tear-down and rebuild, and that's after you pass through security in the hold room. That area is constrained right now with the number of people we have on the certain sizes of planes. If you get two in there, you're sitting on top of each other. So, that adds about 50% more area there, and then you can see the jet bridges that go out to the aircraft. This is modern times, it's quaint to walk out in the rain to get on the airplane, but really the jet bridges are nice, and for our ADA abilities, you know, that makes it more accessible for all citizens. The orange part is rehabilitation of the terminal, and then you see the pink or salmon colors, that's building a new canopy out in front of the terminal to allow people to unload if it's raining to get into the terminal, and then a small pad off to the right-hand side is, that's a covered ground support equipment charging station. So, all the airlines are moving towards the electric vehicles for their ground servicing equipment, so that puts a pad where they can charge those and plug those in. And then finally, the little green is expanding the baggage belt on the right-hand side. The blue diagram, I only show you that just because it indicates that while we're doing this, the period of performance of this is about 750 days for this contract, and a good portion of that, we will have to displace passengers over to this further left-hand blue area. That'll be a temporary screening and hold room, so the TSA will work out of that, that's where you'll get screened, and then sit in that hold room area as the project's being completed. We think that displacement will be about 18 months of that entire contract time. So, it'll be a little bit of inconvenience, but an inconvenience for, again, this is all about the future. This comes from the planning, the 20-year plan of what we think the employments will be as time goes on. So, we're very excited about this, to get this started. We do need to get on contract with this by the end of the month, since we took the bids on May, or sorry, March 28th. So, tomorrow, the authorities' meetings, we're going to go over this, make sure everyone's comfortable with the, it's risk, I don't like to use that word, but the fact that we're going to have to initially, for the project ordinance and budget amendment, put up 4 million or so of the balanced fund money until we get that other grant in. But for right now, this is to approve the 13-plus-million-dollar federal grant.
I will, go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Mitchell.
I was going to make a motion to approve.
Okay, go ahead, that's fine.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to authorize the chairman to sign the FAA grant offer when received. Any discussion on the motion? I would just say that Commissioner Leiner and myself attended the Commercial Development Committee meeting in the last week or so with Mr. Pope as our chairman and several other members, and a lot of discussion went into this, a lot of concern, you know, because we were hopeful that we were going to get another grant that we did not get, but I think the committee feels comfortable in the recommendation that's going to go forth tomorrow in asking the full authority to approve this, and Commissioner Leiner and myself also felt comfortable in bringing it before the Board of Commissioners. So, again, a little risk, but I think, long-term, we've got the funds to pay for it, so.
Sure.
All right, any further discussion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Thank you, Andy, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Question, the flight to DC, can you give us an update on that?
Yes, it's operating well. I don't have the update for this weekend's numbers, but past weekends, it's been as high as 63 outbound and 58 inbound on a 65-seat airplane, so it's approaching, you know, 90%. The first weekend, we kind of hit that before schools were out up north, and that was the lowest day, but since then, it's been doing well. We've talked to American about it, and they're very, they're very thrifty with their praise of anyone and any amount of service, but they say they do not have any concerns about it, and they've hinted at discussions about continuing it for next summer.
Question?
Sir.
How many flights do we have coming in and going out per week?
We have, on average, four flights a day. So, on Saturday with this flight, it's five flights a day, but on some days, Tuesdays and Wednesdays are the lowest days, it'll be down to three flights. You've probably seen in the news, all the uncertainty is what I call it in the industry right now, but it really revolves around the pilot shortage problem, and that is exacerbated at the regional level because those are the pilots that fleet up to the other ones. So, we are holding our own, we're doing well. I tell a lot of people, if they could merely guarantee us four flights a day probably for the next year through this uncertain period, you know, I would be very happy with that. We are still continuing to talk to other airlines and having them interested in coming in here and making a destination, and again, that's why all these things that we're doing, runway, terminal, I call it setting the table so that we can invite others to come participate and give the community the service. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Short? Andy, we thank you, appreciate what you do, sir.
Thank you.
All right, item 11, the one we've all been waiting for, Mr. Steve Bennett, IIT man. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board. Have a little bit of finance cleanup from last fiscal year to this year. I have two purchase orders that were issued in 2122 for equipment needed to improve network connectivity and wireless network connectivity in areas of the Judicial Center, specifically for the Sheriff's Office, and to upgrade Craven County's voiceover IP telephone system. The equipment was ordered, but as of yet, we have not received the equipment until, we're not expected to receive the equipment until sometime in November. So, asking the Board to approve a budget amendment, as shown in attachment number 11, in the amount of $93,460.
So moved. We have a motion, have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion on the motion to approve the budget amendment of $93,460? Here no discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCain?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leiner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
All right, item 12 is finance, we have a budget amendment. Ms. Amanda, good morning.
Good morning.
How you doing today?
Good, how are you doing today?
All right.
Commissioners, I have one budget amendment for your consideration this morning. It is for Forest Resources. We are requesting a budget amendment for the amount of $16,867, and this is for additional funds to help cover tentative raises for certified employees, increase of health insurance, and to assist a motor vehicle replacement.
All right, any discussion, questions from the Board?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment of $16,867. Any discussion? Here no discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCain?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leiner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Amanda. All right, Commissioners, item 13 would be appointments. You have there pending, current, and upcoming appointments. Under pending, you see the Board of Equalization and Review for District 5, Craven Agent and Craven County Board of Adjustments, and the voluntary agriculture district. Are there any nominations for any of those?
No, I've got some District 5.
Okay. But you don't have nothing for the Board of Equalization and Review?
No, no, no.
Okay. All right, here none on the pending, we'll go to current. We have the New Bern Planning and Zoning ETJ listing, providing attachment 13B with the vacancy there. You do have on your desk there Mr. Marshall Ryan Ballard, who lives in the Rocky Run community.
I would appoint him.
Okay, we have a nomination for Mr. Ballard. Do you have any additional nominations? Having none, he will be accepted by acclamation. Next, we have the Fire Tax Commissioners Board for Township 5. Hello, Commissioner McCain?
Yes, I have application for Mr. James Hunter as a tax commissioner.
James Hunter?
H U N T R, the Auto Fire Department.
All right, you have the nomination for Mr. Hunter. Are there any additional nominations from the Board? Here none, Mr. Hunter will be accepted by acclamation. Next, you have the Emergency Medical Services, Tim Bazemore, who represents Coastal Medical Transport. He seeks reappointment.
Recommend we reappoint.
All right, we have the nomination of Mr. Bazemore. Are there any additional nominations from the floor? Here none, he will be accepted by acclamation. Next, we have the Craven County Planning Board, Commissioner Marks District.
Tom Lilly, I reappoint.
Okay, we have a nomination, Mr. Tom Lilly. Are there any other nominations? Here none, Mr. Lilly will be accepted by acclamation. Then we have for Township 6, Commissioner Leiner. We have the Fire Tax Commissioners Board, Ms. Sue Authers.
Motion to reappoint.
Okay, we have a nomination, Ms. Authers. Are there any additional nominations? Here none, Ms. Authers will be accepted by acclamation. You see there, the upcoming terms expire in August 2022, we have a long list there. Please take note of them and those that would represent your respective districts. Any additional appointments to bring before the Board today? Here none, we will go to item 14, County Turners Report, Mr. Grady. Good morning, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. I have two items for the Board's consideration this morning. Both involve county-owned property acquired through the tax foreclosure process. Both properties before the Board this morning are owned jointly with the City of New Bern, and as is customary, the city has already considered and approved the proposed transactions. The first parcel is 803 Pavy Avenue with a parcel ID number of 8007105. The offer amount is $2,000. The original taxes due and cost of foreclosure totaled $4,291.75, and the tax value of the property is $4,000. I would recommend that the Board consider approving this, and of course, we'll put it out for upset bids, and it'll be back before the Board for final approval after that process is completed.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the process for upset bid process for parcel number 8-007-105. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed, all right, and B.
The second parcel is 2107 Pearson Street, also located in the City of New Bern with a parcel ID number of 8039079. The offer amount is in the amount of $3,750. The original past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure totaled $4,805.06, and the tax value of the property is $7,500. As with the other parcel, I recommend the Board consider giving approval to this. It will be put out for upset bids, and will be brought back before the Board for final approval after the process is completed.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the upset bid process for parcel number 8-039-079. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, sir. County Manager's Report.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, pleasure to be here with you today. I wanted to update you on a couple of things. Last week, I attended the Criswama Meeting for the month of July, and we had a great meeting. Commissioner Jones attended with me there, got the annual engineering report and all the plans that the landfill has over the next five years, which includes an expansion and reworking of the Newport Transport Station in Carterick County. Also attended an ACT meeting with Commissioner Mitchell, albeit I was very late because of the engineering report that was at the meeting before, but they, again, as Mark pointed this morning, appointed some new folks to the Board and got a reconfigured organization and looking forward to getting out and raising some money and advocacy for the base. Also, Mr. Bumgarner's here this morning, and I know I'm going to catch him by surprise, but I did want to make you aware, tomorrow, July 19th, is Shelton Toler, our Chief Building Inspector's last day. He is retiring after 30 years with Craven County, and I just want to speak a little bit about Shelton. Shelton is someone who I've learned to trust very well, Don. Shelton's very smart, he's a very capable building inspector, and he's done this county a great service over his career. There's never an issue that I can't call Shelton and ask him a question, and he knows the answer right there, has a wealth of knowledge, and he's really brought forth the folks who come into the building inspection department, really made them better over his career, and I know Don and Chad, I think a lot of them. We're hopeful Shelton will come back part-time with us once he gets some time off to help us out when we need it, but I just want to recognize him. But I just want to recognize him, and if you have a chance tomorrow, stop by the office on his last day.
What time is that?
Just anytime, really, anytime you're in town. Also, would like to do a little calendar gymnastics with you this morning. We are, got some follow-up things with budget that we need to handle in the month of July. We were not quite ready for this meeting, but I would like to check your calendars for next week. Now, we got one Commissioner that's out of town until Wednesday. He's back on Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, really Wednesday, Thursday next week, I believe, are the two days. If we could have a recess meeting, recess this meeting, come in, maybe 8:30, 1:30, whatever the Board's desire.
On what day?
Either Wednesday or Thursday of next week.
I'm going to be unavailable for our county conference.
So the other Commissioner will be out Monday and Tuesday. That's Commissioner Liner, he'll be out of town.
I'm okay, Thursday would be my preference.
Okay, Friday?
Friday will work.
Friday works.
Friday, 8:30? 9?
Friday, the 29th.
29th.
10:30?
10:30? 1:30?
Late morning would work better for me, but I will make whatever work.
Whatever.
10:30?
10:30.
How long is it going to take us? Three hours?
I don't know yet.
Good two, at least. And just to give the Board, we're going to pick up on some personnel issues that we talked about, related employee pay, programs that the county offers. We're going to talk about capital projects related to the art money that needs some direction from the Board, and also just some minor things that you asked us to come back in July with.
Well, I think that's important.
Could we do 10 o'clock?
10's okay with me. I don't know yet, so I'll let you know.
Well, we're going to have to make a decision right now.
Because we got to recess this meeting, yep.
So July 29th, 10? Here?
It's okay with me.
You need 10:30?
I'm okay with that.
Can we? 10:15.
Okay.
10 makes it real hard because I've got a 9 o'clock appointment.
Okay, 10:15 on July 29th. Hearing any objection? 10:15, all right. So we will recess this meeting today to reconvene in this room.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
July 29th.
All right.
Okay. Other than, there's a special birthday today, someone in this room. I don't know if he wants to be recognized for his birthday or not, but I believe he's 59 years old today.
And hold him.
And hold him.
Again.
Hold him.
I'm a senior Tom Walker.
Happy birthday, sir.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Other than that, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if you have questions for me, that's all I have.
All right, any questions for the County Manager?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, now we will go to Commissioners' Report. Commissioner Mark, you want to start us out today?
Actually, I have nothing to report, other than, you know, I've been listening to what's been going on in television, that's been happening in our country. I think it's important that the Board take a good look at the necessary precautions that we have to take so it doesn't happen in our county. And at this point, I think the constituents of our counties would be willing to pay extra money to do it if we have to, and I don't think we have to. But I think it's so important, we don't need to have happen what has happened in Texas and Florida and Indiana and all these places. I just think that we've got to get ahead of the game and we've got to be prepared for anything that might happen in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner McKay?
Yes, I have a couple things here. I have a project that I've been working on for the last, for a long time now, is the project there on Adam Creek Road. I was working with Michael Amen, he's the engineer for the project. And the project we began sometime next month in August, I was told. They already got the stakes down there to do the project. They're going to resurface Adam Creek Road and wind it. And also, they can do the pipe elevation there approximately three feet high so that people in that residence in the Adam Creek area be able to get out if they have a storm. Because if they have a storm, the water's so high that the fire department, myself, is unable to go there and rescue anyone from the area. So as sometime next month, I'm not sure what date it is, but Michael Amen and I have been working on for a long time now, so we are in the process of resurface, again, Adam Creek Road and elevated the bridge there for approximately three feet so that people have access to in and out of Adam Creek area. Also, too, I spotted some people down there on Adam Creek yesterday, other times, and we also in the process of doing a resurface joining drive. It's also on off Adam Creek Road. Starts sometime in next month. That's all I have as of now.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm going to piggyback on your comments about the NC MAC press conference last Tuesday. And we have waited to announce this next initiative until that press conference. In December of 2021, North Carolina Military Affairs Commission conducted a survey across North Carolina, all demographics, all areas, all age groups, to determine their level of awareness of the second-largest economic sector in the state. And what the survey showed was North Carolina is a very patriotic state, but that most people didn't know a whole lot about the defense industry or the military installations, unless you're in a host community like we are. But if you're east of 95 or west of 95, you know very little about it, with it which includes Mecklenburg County, Asheville, Wilmington, because it's a younger area, and of course, the Triangle. So that was the basis for kicking off the Citizen Education Campaign that we're starting in Raleigh last Tuesday with it, and then we're going to expand across the state. But that survey is the reason behind our enhanced public education efforts over what military presence, defense industry directly or indirectly brings to the state. And that's partially why public education advocacy efforts are expanding across the state. The press conference was the kickoff, we got coverage all over the last week in the Triangle. We will move, we hope, to Charlotte, Mecklenburg County later this fall. We have two first-ever conferences coming up in the state. One is next week in Fayetteville, the Association of United States Army Officers. And then in September, we have the first-ever North Carolina Association of Defense Communities Regional Conference, first one in North Carolina, first one on the East Coast. So we are really, really focusing on educating all citizens on the importance of the industry and highlighting this particular economic sector. So that's been my focus for the last month with it, and I appreciate the attention that this Board and this county has put on those issues.
Thank you for your service. Commissioner Liner?
Sure, two things. I want to piggyback off Andy, he talked to you about the $8 million plus that was in the budget for the airport. We all knew, we all worked on it to get it out there. But I think if we see Steve Tyson?
Yes.
Norman Sanderson, Jim Perry, and John Bell. When we went up there for the county day, we talked to all of them before they went in, so they all had a hand in it. Steve had the biggest hand in it as he started it, pushed it with, from the House side, and then Sanderson had it from the Senate side and everything else, push it through, so. Nobody thought it was going to go, even when you, you know, talked to leadership, they all thought it was a good deal because they didn't think they were going to put any money forward during the short session. So with their help and everything else, we got it. And it's going to be, it's going to, it's going to put us well ahead for that airport. We wasn't looking for that road properly, probably until 2930, maybe, even start that thing, but move on to that. So it's going to make that airport, and what Andy has done for that and the expansion of the terminal and everything else, I mean, it's going to move us up the ladder. And I think you're going to start seeing some movement here in the next 18 months or so for airlines, once we show them what we're doing and what's going on.
Can I stop you right there?
Yes, sir.
If you would be in agreement, I think our verbal appreciation is needed, but if you would be okay with it, and the Board, maybe just let's send a little letter to each of them. Not that we don't appreciate everything they do, but we recognize as a Board of Commissioners that this was, this is something that had to happen for the survival of that airport. So hearing any objections? Not County Manager, if we could, we'll do that. Okay, thank you, continue, sir.
Next thing, I start my journey to Denver tomorrow, so anybody has anything that's on the agenda, any meetings out there that you think you want information on, let me know, and my schedule's pretty much full on every day out there. I've got the rural section I'm going to, got two vendors things, and I'll be making a presentation on our vendors for what we do here to try to get some improvements here, and I'm trying to get a health center set up here from the VA. So they've got a grant for funding to do that, so we're going to try to sell that out there. And rural, what was the other one we talked about, Jack?
You, some of the art money and communication.
Financial on that, so. But if you see anything on the schedule that you want information on, just let me know, I'll be more than glad to try to get into the meetings. Just keep me in prayer because I'd like to get out there and all those flights.
Safe travels to you and First Lady. Thank you for going. Commissioner Smith?
On last, at last week, on the 14th, Thursday the 14th, I attended the East Carolina Workforce Development Awards and Appreciation Banquet, I guess it was, in Carterick County, in Moorhead. And it was very inspiring. They recognize people who had done well in the workforce development areas, and I won't go into the different areas, but they recognize seven young adults for outstanding work and success, and of the seven, four of them was from Craven County, which makes us feel very good. And they recognized one of the managers, and the manager was also from Craven County. And of the two workforce departments or partnerships, the Vote Center was one of them, and so one of them was from Craven County as well. Now, this, this workforce development process, as all of you know, work with students to get them, to give them incentive, self-awareness and self-courage, and give them skills to get into the workforce. And some of them had some interesting stories to tell and some great successes. But I was extremely struck and proud of the fact that the numbers recognized, and all of them were not recognized, they said there were many others, but they chose ones with greater success, and four of them were from Craven County. So that speaks well for us, I feel. And also, I attended on Saturday, I was late, however, I did also attend the, go to my sister's house, it was invitation, most of you probably received that. And they're coming along doing well. Of course, it was a fundraising project, and they, they're needing more funds to finish the project. The house is doing very well, the inside of it is complete, complete, and they have several people in the county with businesses who are committed and have donated their efforts to the project. For example, I think they said Creekside Cabinet Makers are making the cabinets, I can't remember all of the folk that have worked, but that's an example of what's happening in Craven County. Now, this project is very similar to what we're doing with the workforce development. Benita Simmons is one of the directors and managers of the project, and they are building this house to have a place for people to re-enter society, many of them from prisons and that sort of thing. So I was struck as well by that, not unaware before visiting, but I think that is an outstanding project that we will have as a resource to Craven County and something that will help us to reach out to people in need and get them back into places that they will be worthy citizens of, given, they are worthy, we think they're worthy, but they will be given back to the community. And I think that is a great project as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Booker?
Piggyback on what the County Manager said about Shelton Toler and his retirement. I was with a contractor last week, and he, of course, knew that Shelton was retiring and was very sorry and sad to hear that he was leaving because he said he's so good to work with. And that's coming from a contractor, they don't always love inspectors, but they have a lot of respect for him, all the ones that I've ever talked to about him. I have a copy of a newspaper article here dated September of 2010, so almost 12 years ago, and it's titled "Paving the Way." And if you remember, a few months back, there were two ladies here who came to speak about getting their road paved. It says in this article that we've got a couple of steps to go through before we can say it's going to get added to the system. It may, it may still be a while before the paving happens, but the road is in line for inclusion. That was in 2010. So sometimes the wheels grind slowly at the DOT, but the road is now paved. I went out there last week and looked at it, and the road is paved. So sometimes it takes a long time. Mentioned in this article are Gene Preston, who's our former Senator, Steve Tyson, Reed Smith, Duane Alligood, all those names are in this article. So I just wanted to report that the ladies that were here must be smiling now because they're, they can drive on pavement, so.
That's great.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Only thing that I-
I have one question in jest before we go out. Did the article mention the greatest Commissioner ever?
Yeah, that's, you got it, that's the road.
I know, I would have thought Ms. Bee would have said that, really. I just, the only comment I have today, we have great citizens who serve Craven County every day that pass away. But one individual I think that should be recognized is Ms. Thelma Chadwick. Ms. Thelma worked with our senior services for many years. She passed away on July the 7th. I think they had her funeral services this past weekend. I don't know how many of you knew Ms. Thelma or had the opportunity to work with her, but fantastic individual. She did a lot for Craven County seniors through the years, and we just want to, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, extend to her family ID for sympathy, and I would like for it to be spread upon the minutes of this meeting that we did recognize her contribution to Craven County. Anything else to bring before the Board of Commissioners? Commissioner Liner?
Just bringing up County Manager, I thought I brought it up last time, but it may have not, but the old city manager and the interim city manager, Pavlock, Jim Freeman, passed away.
Yeah.
Last week.
That was very unexpected, wasn't it?
Unexpected. He had, believe it or not, gallstones that went south real fast. And they just couldn't do it. But they're going to have memorial service, they have a mass on Friday, and memorial service is Saturday. A lot of people will be attending, Pavlock will be sending their attendance together on that. He was probably, speaking out of turn, but he was probably the best manager we had that worked with us to try to, you know, get something going and everything else. He will be, Mr., he was a great individual.
He was.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Yes, and please let the minutes reflect that also of his contribution. All right, anything else to bring before the Board? If not, what we're going to do, we're going to ask for a motion to recess this meeting for July the 29th at 10:15 a.m. in this room. So moved. All right, we have that motion, do I have a second? All right, we have the second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, we stand recessed.